Article 23.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $35,000 to retain the services of engineers and designers to develop a master plan for the Centennial Grove.
Second? Lisa? Thank you.
So, I would like to explain our thought process here. First of all, let me start off by saying "master plan," that just makes the hair on everyone's neck stand up, I know. What we're looking for here is not an actual architect or landscape architect's plan. What we're looking for is a management plan. And I would like to take a moment or two to outline why we think this is necessary. Centennial Grove is a special gem on the Lake Chewbacca there. And the property that the town has is fairly extensive out there. Includes Folsom Pavilion, some outbuildings, and the cottage that's on the lake, as well as the ballfields that are towards the entrance to the park. Several years ago, Centennial Grove became an undiscovered gem and then got discovered and overrun. And we had a lot of wrangling and ultimately had to make it a residents-only property where you now have to get a wristband to go, which complicates things. We understand. The Folsom Pavilion, two years ago, was deemed unsafe by the building inspector and we had to do some emergency repairs on that last fall. We had gotten some pricing to either repair or to restore or to replace Folsom Pavilion, and that was in preparation for coming to Fall Town Meeting. And those estimates were in the $470,000 to $480,000 range, so we went into a little bit of sticker shock because that's just really a big wooden tent. There are smaller outbuildings there that need some TLC. There are really no sanitary facilities outside of the portable restrooms. And parking is always kind of tricky. Several years ago, the YMCA took over Camp Dory, which has worked out very well. That's about the only thing that's going right at the Grove right now. The cottage that overlooks the lake is available for rent, but it's very rarely rented. It has one bathroom, and it also has a cesspool. There is a garage attached to this, which has been vandalized a number of times. So, given the town's sort of financial position, which I understand is doing better, but we also are facing a lot of big-ticket items coming up in the foreseeable future, we're looking for ways to make Centennial Grove more self-sufficient and also find ways to improve it. So, the point of this master plan is to have professionals look at it and come up with some strategies where the town could start to generate revenues. We would ask for a couple of varieties of a plan. There's been some talk of, do we sell the cottage off and take that money to fix the rest of the park? That would be one thing to look at. That's gotten, I know that people feel strongly on both sides of that. Then, do we start to actually charge? Do we increase our facilities so that it's more attractive, we can generate revenues? Or do we just do nothing and keep applying Band-Aids for the foreseeable future? So, what we're looking for is sort of a suite of recommendations that could be made that we could bring to town. We would have public forums and look at what might be the best way to manage this property going forward. So, that's the intent of what we're looking for. We will prepare an RFP working hand-in-hand with FinCom, who obviously has a vested interest in seeing this property be better managed. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any further discussion?
Dominic Olivo, Two Southern. Where did the amount come from, the $35,000? If you haven't spoke to the expert yet.
BZ?
Hi. We looked around and looked at other studies that have happened, for instance, over in Gloucester with Stageford Park and different things, to see how other communities had arrived at, you know, similar processes. And so, that's where we got that number. We think that we can do it for within the $35,000.
Okay. And just as a follow-up, does the camp pay the town for the facilities?
Excuse me, I'm sorry?
Does the Camp Dory pay the town of Essex for the facilities?
No, the camp does not. The way Camp Dory works, and this is similar to when the town itself ran the camp program, the users of the camp pay for the staff that runs the camp. So, whether it was the town running it, or now the YMCA running it with Camp Dory, it was always user-funded.
So, the if switch YMCA doesn't make money on that camp?
I don't know what the YMCA's bottom line is on the camp. They're engaged with us to provide the service without liability to the town. They assume all the liability. The town does not receive money because the users pay the YMCA. And I can also add that the YMCA fees are, there's a requirement that an Essex resident pays less than some other user that's from out of town.
For the camp?
For the camp, yes.
And are other businesses allowed to use the grounds there if their customers are paying them and not the town?
There are not. The only other groups that use the Centennial Grove are groups that pay a fee to utilize it, like a company outing or something like that. I can also add that the town did go out to bid a couple of years ago to determine if we could find somebody that would run the Grove and pay the town a fixed amount of money for benefiting from whatever programs that they would run there. And even though that was suggested by one outfit that thought it was a good idea, not even they took the time to propose, make, put in a proposal for that service. In fact, nobody applied. So, we did actually test the waters as to whether a company would want to come in, pay the town, and then they could reap the benefit of scheduling different things at the facility. And there were no takers.
Sure. I'm just saying, so if there's a company...
Excuse me, excuse me. We're not doing an assessment of the Y service at Centennial. We're talking about funds for a master plan.
Sure.
So, let's stay within the scope. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article 24.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to produce visual renderings of public safety building options as set forth under Article 24 of the warrant.
Sir, second?
After funding for some engineering site studies last fall, the town building committee worked with Keolo and Bienic Associates, who is the continued firm from Reinhardt Associates, who we had done an earlier public safety building study with, to look at engineering solutions for site layout at the existing town public safety building site, as well as other surrounding town-owned lands, which mostly includes Memorial Park. For the purposes of this conversation, as a little background, we had looked at the cemetery site off of John Wise Avenue in past iterations of the study. Since then, both the DBW and the fire department have weighed in against using this location, so that's essentially off the table. We've looked around very exhaustively within the sort of central area of town where the fire department needs to be located to find available towns. We've talked to a lot of private landowners, and there really is no option other than the site that the building is on right now, as well as portions of Memorial Park, which are right across the street, right across Shepherd Memorial Drive. So, right now, there's sort of two scenarios that could move forward. And one is a complete reconstruction of the public safety building on the existing site. That scenario would incur additional costs above and beyond just the building itself, which would include temporary housing for both departments during the duration of construction, likely moving the alignment of Shepherd Memorial Drive slightly towards Memorial Park, along with any utilities, including sewer and a sewer force main under there, demolition of the existing facility. And then, the big unknown is contaminated soil that was encountered during the construction of the handicap ramp and during the installation of the force main under Shepherd Memorial Drive. That could be very costly to the town. Another option that's being considered is rehabilitating the police department, rehabilitating the existing building for the police, and directly across Shepherd Memorial Drive, building a fire station in that corner of Memorial Park. Obviously, there are pros and cons to both the situations. There's a significant cost difference between those two solutions. And it's, regardless of what happens there, it's going to make a distinct change to the look of that area. Either option will change. So, what we're asking in this article is to fund some money to have some actual visual renderings overlaid over photographs of the town areas from many different angles, driving up the street, from the park, from Town Hall, all sorts of angles, with a superposition of a visual rendering of those buildings. We think this is important because it's really hard for people who aren't trained in site design and stuff to look at a site plan and visualize what the building might actually look like in place. So, this study would look at both of these options and would provide these renderings. And the town building committee would continue to hold some public forums to discuss the options and to be able to present these drawings and get feedback on this proposal.
So, Chuck Howe, 48 Southern Ave. As I understand it, this proposal is to generate renderings for new building. I would expect that an evaluation of new building options would include not only the visual impact, but also a range of cost and benefits. Does this proposal include an evaluation of the cost and benefit of the designs that would be rendered, or is it simply the, just the visual rendering and the cost and benefits are addressed elsewhere?
This is simply a visual rendering. The previous engineering study had assigned cost estimates to both of the proposals.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Mike?
Mike Dyer in Indian Rock Lane. It's kind of hard to imagine that at least one of these options wouldn't affect the ballfields. Will these renderings can take into account how we handle the ballfields, especially if we put a fire station on the same side of Memorial Drive as the baseball diamond is now on? How do we do that without affecting the, that use of the area?
Yes, definitely. I mean, that's one of the main reasons that we're looking at this, is because of the effect, not just on the streetscape, but also from the ballfields, from that area of looking back towards the building. So, the intent is to look at it from all angles. It's not just going to be a picture from the street side.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article 25.
I, Susan Gull Coviallo, moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $83,386 to be added to the assessors' overlay account for the abatement of uncollectible taxes that accrued after the expiration of former leaseholds at Canoma Point.
Sir, second?
Second.
Well, I'm sure you'd all love to hear me talk about this. For those of you who know me, you know that this is not my area of expertise, so I would ask our town accountant, Roxanne, to come up and just explain to you what this is. Thank you.
It's a housekeeping article to clear property taxes that are no longer due from the collector's records. Some Canoma properties were transferred to town ownership after the taxes had been assessed. Since town-owned property is exempt from taxes, the residual balance of $83,386 needs to be cleared from the books. The amount will return to free cash the following year as the amount uncollected taxes will be reduced, and that's considered in the calculation for free cash. So, if you have a higher amount of property taxes due, that comes against your surplus to give you a lower free cash. But because those taxes will be gone, they will be less reduced from your surplus to give you a free cash balance. So, nothing will be lost in the end.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 26.
I, Michelle French, moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $20,000 for the purchase and installation of the new generator for the Essex Senior Center.
Sir, second?
Second.
The generator has been taken offline. It cannot handle the use of the building, so we are requesting a new one. And I forgot what else I was going to say. Yeah, that's it.
Any other discussion? Senior Center needs a generator. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 27.
I, Matthew Coogan, moved that the town vote to acquire from National Grid all of the municipal street lighting facilities and equipment, municipal floodlighting and area lighting facilities and equipment, consisting of luminaires, lamps, ballasts, photocells, dedicated poles where applicable, foundations, conduits, dedicated manholes where applicable, and other underground equipment where applicable, that are not part of the electric distribution system and the rights appurtenant thereto, owned by National Grid and located in the town of Essex, to transfer from free cash the sum of $14,000 for said acquisition and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this article.
Sir, second? Thank you.
So, this is step one of a process to convert the town's 115 streetlights from the current technology, which is high-pressure sodium, to a new LED, to new LED technology. Currently, National Grid owns the, owns all of the lighting that the town has. In order for the town to convert to LED, we have to take ownership of those lights, and that's through a purchase, and that $14,000 reflects the estimate that National Grid has given the town to take over those lights. And I guess I would also mention the reason to convert to LED technology, as many communities in the surrounding area have already done. There is the reduction in energy use, which would contribute to our overall energy reduction goals as a green community. There's also an improvement in the quality of light that these LEDs emit. There's also less glare and light pollution that would affect the night sky. And finally, with energy savings, there would be some reduction in energy costs associated with converting to LED. So, again, this is, this is the first step that gets us on the process of doing that.
Yes?
Bob Jaren, Three River View Hill. I sit up above the town, and the light pollution is god-awful from the center of town. There's no two ways about it. I noticed that we're actually raising the budget for what we pay for electricity by $4,000 with the addition of this equipment. Is that not true? I mean, I believe it's $14,000 now, and it goes up to $18,000 in the budget for the electrical costs. So, your savings don't seem to match what's in the proposed budget.
Let Brandon answer your question.
Number 424 on page 20. Well, what the budget does on page 20 is it shows that there was almost, there's a little over $15,000 expended in FY16. We're currently in FY17, and so we've been spending under budget. Of course, we don't have a final number for what we're going to spend in '17 because we're not through with it yet. And FY18, it's the same amount of proposed budget that we had in FY17, so it's not being proposed to increase.
Okay. Well, I was looking back to '15, and it's, I mean, it's going up $4,000.
Yeah, those are, well, those are what were actually expended. I believe in '15, there was, and in '16, there were probably similar budget numbers, but we're only reporting here what was actually spent.
Okay. Just as a question about the kind of lighting and stuff, because right now, you have, there's no hoods on any of these lights. They shine, they shine in my bedroom. There's no two ways, and I'm 100 feet above the town. I mean, it's ridiculous. If you're going to increase the candle power, that's going to just get worse unless you direct all the light down, so you can stop the light pollution around. And the kind of equipment you're getting, is that what we're getting? And are you going to eliminate, basically, it's not street lighting we're doing. We're lighting up parking lots, we're lighting up boatyards, we're lighting up all this stuff for just the people who live downtown, and businesses elsewhere don't get that. So, why are we doing that downtown for these businesses, where everybody should just be required to put this kind of downlighting down? So, we eliminate the pollution that's really going all over the place of town.
So, to answer your question, the LED streetlights, the lamps that we would most likely convert to, and most manufacturers have the same convention, but they're, what they're called full cutoff. So, there's, you know, you have the, you have the flat LED look. I don't know if you've seen one before, and underneath are the lights, and they shine directly down on the streets. I would say it's a better design from what we currently have. So, it's definitely a more concentrated light, and the, and you can look in surrounding communities. For instance, Gloucester has these lights as well, and you would notice that there's not as much glare coming from those.
What we have now are floodlights that shoot across streets and everything, then shoot out. Before, okay. And I realize, but I, just to be able to make the purchase, that it actually does benefit the community in reducing the pollution from the light that's going on is something that's really necessary here.
Another note, by the way, there's privately funded streetlights in town, too. So, so some of the lights that you see may not be actually being paid for by the town of Essex. Any further discussion? Yes?
Sarah Wilworth, I, or Nine Indian Rock Lane. I'd like to ask if all the streetlights down in the causeway in the center of town are town-owned, and would they be part of this project? Would all of those streetlights, all of those orange sodium lights, even the ones that are lighting up parking lots and businesses, would those be replaced?
Yes, those lights will be part of the purchase. As you know, we've actually tried to start addressing how those lights are focused, and I know that those lights are owned, not privately owned, they're owned by a grid, because grid did start to work on how those could be adjusted. So, yes, those are included. But of course, the result would not be attained until we actually put the new lights in place.
Any other discussion?
Cliff Agaloff, Low Hill. Has anyone done a rough cut? Has anyone divided the savings into the cost, some sort of projection?
So, right now, there's about 115 lights. The all-in savings, and it comes from a variety of different factors, is about $60 per light per year. That comes to just under $7,000. So, around $6,900 of savings is expected after these lights are installed. Now, there will be a cost to install the lights, but we'll be looking to do that via grant funding that Matt might be able to.
Sure. So, to give you an idea of this process, in order to purchase the lights from National Grid, I think it's a minimum of a six-month timeline, and I would say that's pretty quick. But the goal would be to, once we own the lights, utilize three different funding sources. One is, the state has a streetlight retrofit program that will fund a third of the cost of the conversion. National Grid also has rebates and incentives, and those are based on the kilowatt-hour saved, and that rate right now is 25 cents per kilowatt-hour saved. So, that'd be another funding source. And then, the third funding source, because we are a green community, we would qualify to apply for grant funding to also cover the cost of conversion as well. And that's kind of an open-ended one. We would, I think ideally, what I would want to do is apply for the rest of that balance, so it'd be entirely cost-free, but it is a competitive grant. But the other two funding sources would, are prescriptive.
Okay. So, once you subtract out all those subsidies and the town...
Hey, Cliff?
What?
Question's got to go through me. Matthew needs to be recognized. All right? So, what is your question?
I still have the same question. After we spend our money, what is the, what is the benefit to the town? After all the subsidies, after all the incentives?
I think he said...
What's left on the table, and what's the cost benefit?
I think he said that the savings was approximately $60.
I didn't hear it. He said that we'd save $7,000. What's it going to cost the town to save that $7,000?
And what they said was that there's...
I didn't get an answer.
There was an answer.
No, I did not get an answer.
Brendan said that there was funding sources through grants.
Right. So, after all those sources, what's our, what's our cost and what's the benefit? Is it a five-year payback? Is it a three-year payback? Does anybody know?
BZ?
Nobody knows.
Mr. Zabricki, can you give the ROI on this for Cliff?
So, again, the hope would be to get the light conversion itself funded by grants, 100%. And so, if there's no cost to actually doing the conversion, it would be roughly that $7,000 per year. Beyond that, we would have to make sure that probably between 15 and 20 years out, lights would start to need maintenance, and we'd need to save some of that money, a relatively small amount of it, which could perhaps be done with a separate type of account in the future, to make sure we had the money for a company to maintain the lights. But there will be a net positive for the town through this if we get the grants.
Mike?
Mike Dyer, Indian Rock Lane. I hope there's no doubt in people's minds about the value of this project, both in terms of energy savings and really the quality of life in this town. It's been way too long coming. I support this article enthusiastically.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Actually, it was, Greg, was that two-thirds? I declare two-thirds, because it was unanimous. 28, please.
I, David Ollm, move that Article 28 be indefinitely postponed.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 29.
I, David Ollm, move that town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,000 to purchase a new copier for Town Hall and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the old copier by sale or trade.
Any discussion? Want to say anything? Do we need a new copier? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 30. Unanimous, I'm sorry.
Daniel Doucette, John Wise Avenue. I, Dan Doucette, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $130,000 to purchase and equip a new four-wheel-drive forestry vehicle for the fire department, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the old vehicle, replaced by this new vehicle, by sale or trade.
Sir, second? Thank you, Chief.
This is to replace a 1991 vehicle that we actually bought in 2013 used. We got four years of service out of that vehicle. Prior to that, we had a vehicle that did a similar years of service. We bought used in '87, which we ran until 2013. So, as you can see, we get our usefulness out of this. This would be a 20- to 25-year vehicle. It affords us the ability to go off the road into areas where we can't take the larger vehicles, both for purposes of forest fires or brush fires, that type of stuff, as well as gives us the mechanism to trailer some of the trailers we have, which we don't have now. So, that's it in this one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Did I hear no? Unanimous. Article 31.
I, Michelle French, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,200 to complete the... $6,200 to complete the construction of the wellness room at the Essex Senior Center, and all the costs-
Is there a second?
A few years ago, the second story of the Senior Center was being constructed, and it came to a halt, and we spent $2,500 to do the hallway, which looks really nice, and we just need the $6,200 to finish the wellness room.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 32. This is two-thirds. Wesley?
I'm not Wesley, just for the record. Kim Drake, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Aye, Kimberly Drake, move that the town vote to amend the Essex zoning bylaw by deleting Section 6-10.3.3.8.13, which currently, which contains certain prohibited uses in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, and which currently reads 13 residential development which renders impervious more than 15% of a building lot, including the portion of any new street abutting the lot, or which has a lot area of less than 40,000 square feet, excluding wellens for each dwelling unit, and inserting in its place a new Section 6-10-3.3.8.13 to include new prohibited use in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, so that it reads as follows. 13, land which renders impervious more than 15% of a lot, except as allowed by Section 6-10.3.3. B.7.
Was there a second?
The intent of this bylaw modification is to bring the current bylaw into, basically into compliance with what the DEP bylaw has for well and protection areas. So it essentially simplifies it, and instead of having the excess verbiage relative to residential lots, and whether it's on a street and 40,000 square feet, it just simplifies and says "any lot," and just makes the language exactly the same as what's in the DEP bylaws. And please don't confuse this with last year, when there was a change proposed for the district itself. This is not a mapping change, this is simply a text change in the zoning bylaw.
Jeff Fazadian, 97, Western Ave. Last year, we had a, there was a proposal which got tabled on how much of the property you had to pave to allow for fire trucks. Will there be any implications of this or another bill to come in reference to that paving?
This is, this is simply taking 15% of a lot, which was in the previous text as well. So it's just simply saying 15% of a lot can't be impervious. If you exceed that, there are certain allowances for providing infiltration, and that's also further defined within the existing bylaws and the DEP bylaws.
Maria?
Maria Burnham, 30, Southern Avenue. The important thing about that change is the original bylaw, and I agree that you take out residential and all that verbiage, but the original-
Greg, can you lower the mic a little bit?
The original bylaw says that areas less than 40,000 square feet for each of these lots, and that is not in the new iteration. And I think that's an important point, because that, those woods are full of little tiny lots. And if you don't have a size, then you could have crazy little things on all these tiny lots. Some of them are less than 10,000 square feet. Most of them are. And they're just lined up from the 1700s. And so I think that needs to be specified in this. How do you expect to deal with that?
So if a lot is less than 40,000 square feet, it still has to comply with the 15%. So we're not excluding, we're not saying that any small lot is excluded. We're saying any lot, no matter what its use, and no matter what its size, cannot have impervious area exceeding 15%.
But you don't, you don't limit, I mean, in terms of any lot less than 15%?
So if a lot is 10 square feet, 15% of that can't be impervious. Right? So it's just saying any lot, so it's not specifying a residential lot and the 40,000 square feet. It's saying any lot, 15%. And that, and that, again, is very consistent with what DEP requests.
Mike Dyer, again. I've got the same question as Maria. Why, why is that minimum lot size dropped? Is it, is it covered elsewhere in the bylaw? Or is there some other reason that the minimum lot size in that protection district will no longer have to be 40,000 square feet? I'm not sure what the intent or the effect of dropping that phrase is. Can you explain?
This really is, is an attempt to bring our text into agreement with the Wetlands Protection and Department of Environmental Protection requirements. So we weren't scheming to allow or disallow anything. We were trying to just make our text consistent with what the state requires, because right now, it has some, some verbiage in there that is inconsistent.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the need for consistency. I guess the simple question is, is there, are the, is the Water Protection District covered in terms of a minimum lot size requirement elsewhere in the bylaw?
No.
Mr. Moderator, that's enough from me to not vote for it. Hope you all don't.
Mr. Moderator, may I just make one comment?
You've spoken more. I'm sorry, but you've spoken more than-
Okay.
Any further discussion of this article? It requires a two-thirds vote. Yes?
I just, I just want to make sure I understand the language of the article, because I, what I've heard in the discussion isn't, is not necessarily consistent with how I read what's in the material here. So I'm hoping that you can either confirm or clarify sort of my reading of the material. I think what I see is that in the, in the current state, what's prohibited is one of two things. One thing is, it's prohibited to do residential development which renders impervious more than 50%, 15% of a building lot. Or, the second thing is, it's also prohibited to develop a lot which is less than 40,000 square feet. Is that correct in my understanding of the current state? Either of those things is prohibited?
There's a full list of prohibited items currently in the bylaw. There's a list of 16 items. So item 13 was residential use which rendered impervious more than 15% or residential use which has a lot area less than 40,000 square feet. Just to make it clear, the bylaws do have minimum lot sizes for all uses. So by removing 40,000 square feet from this is not removing the lot sizes from the general uses. What it is doing is taking item 13 and not specifically identifying residential land uses. It's saying that the 15% applies to all land uses.
So is it, would it be accurate for me to read this as saying that in the current state, I could not develop a lot which has an area of less than 40,000 square feet, and in the future state, I could? Am I reading that incorrectly?
Yes.
Yes. What's the relevance of the 40,000 square feet, then? It's not clear to me-
I'm sorry, could you repeat the-
What's the, what's the relevance of removing the 40,000 square feet item? It's not clear to me.
Would you mind coming up here for a second, please? I'm having trouble understanding your question. You've spoken more than twice to this article. All right? And that's, so what is your question?
I'm trying to understand the difference between what's allowed under the current state of the language, and what's allowed in the future state of the proposed language.
Honestly, I think it's pretty clear, because what you see in the article is the way it's written today, and what the changes is. It's a removal of the 40,000.
Okay.
That's the change.
If it's, if it's clear to the rest of the meeting, I'll happily defer. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is what I want to-
This, you got this one.
Right.
And you got 13.
Right.
Yours is different than mine.
This is 15. So this is the, this is the new-
Oh, this is going in.
Yeah. So this is striking, but this is what says the 40,000. So that's still maintained in this item?
The one difference is on pre-existing roads. If there's available property, it could drop-
To clarify, in 633, 6322, for the dimensional requirements, 40,000 square feet minimum per dwelling unit in the Water Resource Protection District. So anything that's being created in the Water Resource District has to be 40,000 or greater. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hi again. Aye, Kimberly Drake, move that the town appropriate or reserve the revised amounts from the fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues, and from fiscal year 2018 estimated annual revenues or other available funds, all as specified on the Community Preservation Act Town Meeting Handout, which was handed out while we were sitting here. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for open space reserve, historic resources reserve, community housing reserve, budgeted reserve, administrative expenses, and specific projects.
Is there a second? I believe there was a sheet passed out for this.
This is an article for the Community Preservation Act. The town voted to accept the Community Preservation Act in 2017 with a tax contribution of one-half of a percent. Last year, the town accepted a change to one and a half percent. So the first portion of this handout indicates the revised transfers that include the additional funds that came from moving from one-half of a percent to one and a half percent, and that's the addition of $29,772. The second portion of the handout indicates the allotments of this year's reserves into the various categories. The categories that we are, as a Community Preservation Committee, are allowed to recommend funding for are for historic resources, for open space, recreation, and for senior and affordable housing. And then the final portion of the handout is a recommendation that the town appropriate from our funds $33,210 to complete the restoration of the Spring Street Cemetery fence, which has gone forward through various iterations in Town Meeting. This would be the final component to complete the work on that fence in the historic cemetery.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 34.
Aye, Mark McKenna, move that Article 34 be indefinitely postponed.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mark is stepping down from the Finance Committee. So we want to give him a- Never mind.
Aye, Mark McKenna, move that the town transfer from the Sewer Enterprise free cash the sum of $20,000.
Wait, 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 we didn't vote on your article yet. Your other article.
Oh, forgot.
Okay, was there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next.
Sorry, jumped the gun. After nine years, I got excited. Like, this is my last Town Meeting, you know, up here, for now, at least. Aye, Mark McKenna, move that the town transfer from the Sewer Enterprise free cash the sum of $20,000 to be used to replenish the Finance Committee's reserve fund for the remainder of fiscal year 2017.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 36.
Aye, Mark McKenna, move that Article 36 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. That's it? I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.